Welcome to our Ward Eight Town Hall. Our speakers, I'll just ask everyone, put your cameras on now if you're coming into the call. That's great. Thank you so much. The numbers are still coming in a little bit here. We do expect a few more people to join us. But as we're a few minutes after 6:30, we'll get started now, I think. It's nights like this where I'm sure we're all pleased to have the option to do this sort of thing remotely when Berry Police rightly tell us to stay off the roads unless you need to be on them. It is, it's blustery and slippery out there. And I know we've had a few questions even around that in the last 24 hours, but we're here to answer your questions as residents of Ward Eight. With me, of course, tonight is Councillor Jim Harris, your Ward Councillor. And I will tell you, I've come to rely on Jim over the past three or four years on a whole number of issues. And that's why you've probably seen us working together very closely in the last little while. And I know you've been so well served by such an attentive Ward Councillor. We are both here to listen to you and your concerns citywide or Ward specific. Also with us tonight, Constable Brooks and Constable Langdon. Constable Brooks is our Community Safety and Well-Being Officer. You may be familiar with her role around the city and Constable Langdon, who is with our traffic unit tonight as well, helping us to answer your questions around safety in our city. We also have Michelle Banfield and our CAO, I believe, is on the line as well. Michelle Banfield is a Director of Planning and I know there are lots of planning issues and issues, everything from tree bylaws to major developments that are of interest to Ward Eight. And in the interest of getting to your questions, I'm not going to make a big, long speech, but a couple of things I didn't want to say off the hop. First of all, Lauren Wild from my office is here. Those who've been on these town halls before know that Lauren does an incredible job of organizing and also recording and following up on any issues that we can't answer for you tonight. So if there is a question you ask me, we don't have the information. You can give Lauren your contact details. Her email is in the invite for tonight. And she will be able to get back to you after the meeting. Just a couple of things. Obviously, we're coming off of the Omicron wave. Things are looking a lot better than they were a few weeks ago. Not quite out of the woods yet, but getting very close. We're getting to the point where we're seeing the federal and provincial governments removing mandates and moving towards more of a normal life. With any luck, we won't see many or any future waves. It's been a challenge to get to this and Omicron most especially. If there's a silver lining of how difficult it was in January on the COVID front, it's that through a combination of the number of people who had COVID and the vaccinations, our population is better protected now than we've ever been. And that ultimately is what gets us out of a pandemic. Certainly, the city is starting to plan for what we hope to be a really great spring and summer. Jim's part of the BIA among many other duties. And downtown, there are plans afoot for events and a return to some of our festivals in and around the community later this year. And certainly, we've undertaken a number of projects that have gotten got us into a position to be able to do some of those things in and around the waterfront in downtown. Many, many other things I could talk about. We just had our three task forces report to council on housing, on a new performing arts center and on revitalizing the West End, which is centered on a new food market where the bus terminal is. And that will be once the new bus building is built at the Allendale Go Station. And that project, which is of course, I'm sure, of great interest to people in Ward Eight, will begin this spring. So much else going on, but I'm not going to take up your time. I do want to hand it over to Councillor Harris to give a few opening remarks before we start taking your questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Lehman. And thank you for the kind words. And it is definitely a pleasure to work with and learn from you. I can tell you that with great sincerity. And thank you, everybody, for attending. And first, I want to thank the members of Berry Police Services, Constable Brooks, who I know well, and Constable Langdon. If I knew less, well, but I'm very pleased that you're here tonight to deal with any police-related matters that may come up from residents. And thank you, Ms. Banfield, again, somebody who is front and center as we've gone through the official plan. The new, all that work, it's incredible document, incredible amount of work. And thank you for your work on that. And many of the other items that come up between you know, day to day with residents and your office is always wonderful and your response and timeliness. So thank you. And Lauren, Ms. Wild, thank you as always for leading us in this session, keeping us on track and making this work well for the residents. And so I won't say a lot. I think Mayor Lehman, as he does wonderfully covered a lot of really important territory. And and we're grateful that we're we appear to be moving into a much better state with the pandemic. So I'm thankful for that. I know we're all as citizens of the world, looking forward to engaging in activities and events and time with loved ones that we had to compromise over the last two years. So that's really, really exciting. So I wish for all of you that you are gradually gaining back things in your life that mean the most to you. So thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your patience as we've gone through this together as citizens of the world. And here we are today in our Ward Eight Town Hall, which is our own important part of the world. So with that said, I really look forward to hearing the questions. I'd rather listen to you than 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 hear myself talk. So I really want to hear what's percolating for you over the course of the winter. I just look towards spring and summer and what's really important to you as residents. So with that, I'm happy to open up the floor. And I know there's some direction around questions through the chat or questions, I think.
Yeah. So we'll just ask folks, if you want to ask a question, use the raise hand function in Zoom. That's at the bottom of your screen on the right, or you can type your question in the Q and A if you would prefer not to ask it live. And with that, I will ask Lauren to, Lauren will sort of direct traffic, drawing questions from wherever we get them. And I'll hand it over to her.
Thank you so much, Mayor Lehman. Welcome, everyone. And we'll get started again. If you want to raise your hand, I'm more than happy to add you to the conversation. Or if you'd like me to ask the question on your behalf, just type it into the Q and A and I'm happy to do so. So first up, we do have Arnie. So Arnie, I'm going to add you to the conversation if you can unmute yourself.
Good to go.
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks very much. Thanks for hosting this, folks. I remember the last one, it was very lively discussion for sure. And actually, I think that we kind of went over time. And so I'm not going to try and take up too much time, but I do have a few issues here. So the first one, the short one is just, I got three things I'd like to address, if that's okay. But the first one is any update on the Berry Fairgrounds?
So yeah, we do one at a time. No is the short answer, although Ms. Banfield may be able to give you a bit of an update as to the progress of their their concept planning.
I can certainly. It's my understanding that actually the property ownership, if it hasn't changed, is actually going to change in the very near future. Staff have had preliminary discussions with the new owners. And at this point, it's unclear on whether or not they're going to proceed with the plan that's before the city, or if they're going to do a revised plan. And so at this point, Mayor Lehman is correct in the sense that no, we don't have, the short answer is no, we don't have an update. But the longer answer is that there continues to be interest in that property and the city, city staff continue to have discussions. And as soon as anything becomes public, it'll all be on the website and we'll be able to share more information with you all.
So Osmeaton are still the current owners and they're the ones that are selling?
Correct.
Okay. And so hypothetically, with this sale, then it probably will maybe delay the whole process then?
Most likely.
Does that mean that they'll have to go back and redo all of the the paperwork and all those things, or that paperwork that's already done? Will that just kind of shift over?
It depends on what they want to do. If if this new owner wants to proceed with the plan similar to what Osmeaton has done, they certainly would be able to do that. If they want to make changes, they most likely would have to start with a new application.
So it's quite possible they may scrap the whole plan that's been presented to the city and start totally fresh with a totally different view that they may want to present.
That's possible.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Okay, my second, well, my other question really was about the sound barrier along the 400. I'm not sure if that's something that was originally in the plans or if that's an MTO who would be responsible for that sound barrier along the 400, if there was one to be placed there anyways.
Yeah, I can, Ms. Banfield would probably know better than me, but I, my understanding was that the sound barrier was not part of that plan or indicated as required. Ms. Banfield may know better, but I know there's been interest throughout the Allendale community about sound barriers. But what I've been advised is that area is not indicated as being in line for having them or there being benefits. So I did, but the Osmeaton, I don't think it was. I remember speaking to the former lead for that project who is since gone. So I honestly don't know, but Ms. Banfield might know at this point. So if I can maybe ask Ms. Banfield.
Yeah, my recollection as well is that there wasn't a sound barrier in with the original design. I don't recall seeing one in the in the plan. So the only one was along the railroad tracks where Simcoe Block was, there was one proposed there. But not one along the 400. So but with new ownership, yeah, I think, I guess, everything's, we'll wait and see what happens there. Okay, and I'm gonna skip the other one because it's minor. It's not a big deal. So I'll skip right over that one. But the other one is the developments in this area here. So it's the total of seven towers. So it's development on the old Co-op property. And then the one on the corner, which is a little bit Copaco Berry Antiques and Jacob's Terrace. So so doing some math for all of those units, so Jacob's Terrace and on the Co-op property is 2,005 units. So based on, I average about 2.5 people per unit. So we don't know, obviously, we can't tell if, you know, there could be a single person living there. It could be a family. It could be a couple, could be two couples. And based on the price of renting and things like that right now, it's not unlikely that two couples would even get together and with two bedrooms, one unit live there. So using those kinds of figures of roughly on 2.5 or 2.75 people per unit on an average, that's around over 5,000 people in an area. And I marked it out. It's basically just over one kilometer around. So if you start at the Salvation Army, you go up Tiffin, you turn left on Innisil Street, down to, well, Para is there where the Jacob's, the two towers there, then you go along Innisil Street to your Lone Ranger Enterprise and back down. That's just over a kilometer. And with that amount of people, I did a quick research on terms of towns that are that size. So we're looking at roughly putting the size of a town of Perth, Gatineau Way, or even Perry Sound, all fall within that sort of very close population range. So we're looking at, those are three fairly large sized towns that we're trying, and and I also looked up that that population and the and square footage that they're actually living in. So Perth is located, so 5,930 people located 12.5 square kilometers. Gatineau Way is 5,159 people in 7.7 squared kilometers. And Perry Sound, 6,400 people in 13 point, yeah, 13 square kilometers. So that's a large area spread out. And we're looking at close to the same amount of people into a very small and tight space. Now, nobody that I've spoken to in the Allendale Association, neighborhoods, whatever, we want to see something happening on this spot. There's no doubt about it. Nobody that I know of has said, leave it alone, leave the way it is. But to put up seven towers ranging, the smallest at 17 stories, all the way up to 37, is just, it's just too much and too much. I know we need the intensification, but to put the size of a town of like Perth, Ontario into this small footprint and just a kilometer down the road at the Berry Fairgrounds, I mean, as I just found out now, but originally there was 600 units and townhouses and retirement home and and other places like that. So that's a lot, that's a huge amount of people into a very small space. And I just think I'm asking when the next steps, sorry, I attended both of the public meetings that have happened. So I'm just curious as to where we are in the next steps and where we're going to go from here.
Hey, thanks for that, Arnie. I'll ask Michelle, actually, to update us on the status of those applications. And then maybe Jim and I can make some comments around where we're, you know, our thinking on where it is right now.
Certainly. So the biggest applications you're talking about or you're referring to are the ones that just had a public meeting. I believe I want to say before Christmas. And and they're really big applications, the Tonlu applications. And staff are really just kind of working through them right now. So while we have applications that total those numbers, not all of them are approved. And most cases, we find when we do review some of the applications, the the unit counts and and the the projects usually reduce in size by the time they come forward to council. And so I would expect that would be the case for these projects. And and then rest assured that, you know, all the studies that are submitted for these projects do have to look at the cumulative impact of development that's not only approved but planned in the area. So it does get end up being a mouthful for sure. But but as I said, rest assured, all those things are taken a look at. And it does take quite some time before these applications get back in front of council.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe. Go ahead, Jim, yeah.
Yes, thanks, Ms. Banfield. And thanks, Mr. Evans, for the question. And we've had chatted about this. And I understand what's, residents have have a real interest. And I appreciate the interest in the area being revitalized. And I think those of us who've been in the area for many years recognize that it's, this is not its heyday. This is not its finest time. So we do look forward and we encourage development. But as you're, you're right, it's about size, scale and fit. And and, you know, we need to get that part of it right. And so as Ms. Banfield mentioned, as the process moves forward, and this is a, one of those areas, and again, Ms. Banfield might be able to explain better than I, but it's, it falls into one of those provincial areas where a lot of boxes are ticked as it relates to density because it's in a transit hub. And so these are really important considerations that will allow for a higher density, which will allow for less parking per unit, those kinds of things that really will hopefully encourage more affordable housing, which we desperately need. I know, and we've talked about that too, that that's something that is really well supported by folks in this area because there's concern about losing affordable housing as new buildings are put up. And that's a real concern. So and is there, you know, so I really appreciate the balanced perspective that people are bringing to this from the Allendale area, seeing that the need for improvement, the need for affordable housing, the need for more modern housing, that walkable community, and also the benefits of possibly with more people, getting back to, you know, Christie's IGA is no longer there. But would there be a grocery store back in Allendale? Would there be more facilities for residents who otherwise right now don't have that nice little downtown area that used to exist in Allendale? So, you know, we we look to this as an opportunity. We also be mindful of, you know, the overbuild and not having the things that we really need to make a full community and a walkable, livable community. So I thank you for the question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just sort of jump in quickly to say, Arnie, I, you know, councils received the presentation. I will be transparent that I have some concerns about the scale of density that's being proposed. I'm looking forward to the staff report and I'm very conscious of the need for more housing supply and all of the good reasons why we wish to see higher density development. But that doesn't mean unlimited. And I think always, you know, forever, we have had this tie, this technical tie in planning between our infrastructure capacity, this service capacity, and the number of people that we add into an area. And you can't just ignore that because we need more housing. It's got to be functional. Cities have to work. And so while I do want to see substantial redevelopment of that site, I have real concerns about the the level of density that is being proposed overall. That's my view.
Yeah, we miss Christie's IGA as well, Mr.
Yeah, don't we all?
And, and you know, and and I know, I know part of proposal was to have possibly a a soup, you know, a grocery store there, but then there's, there's no parking, like, you know, and and it would be ideal, like, it would have a grocery store because then it'll also serve more of the downtown because, you know, SOBs never came. They were supposed to take with the IGA down there by Onkali. You see, they, that all kind of fell through. So, you know, either go up Lake Street or up Bayfield or Downes. And so it also helps serve the downtown and people getting off at the bus terminal there, the waterfront station, they could just walk across Long Gowan, Cross Street, go to grocery store. Be great to have that there. But you also have to make it work and have parking for accessibility, like, all that kind of stuff. So.
For sure. Well, thanks. Thanks for the questions, Arnie, for sure.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr.
Thank you so much. So we do have a submitted question from our Q and A. Affordable housing and rent seems to be the number one priority in Berry. Happy to see the work at the Affordable Housing Task Force in Berry, but know that there's only so much that can be done at the municipal level without cooperation from the other levels of government. Do you see any short term or long term progress being made to make housing more affordable in the city?
What a great question. Okay, so I'm going to try a short answer because it's a hugely complicated topic. There's two issues. One is that we don't have enough supportive and social housing. That is publicly funded housing for the most vulnerable and people who need specialized housing in our society. We don't have enough of that. The only solution to that is to get more of it built through federal and provincial funding. I'm very disappointed. We haven't seen federal or provincial funding come to Berry yet in in any significant amount. There was a little bit of federal for a project on Dunlop West. A little bit of provincial for a project on ESA. But in the single digits in the number of units, we should be seeing hundreds. So that's an ongoing effort. I would urge you to press your MPPs and your MPs. But it's something that the county wants to do. And the good news I would offer you is that the County of Simcoe took over the old OPP station on Rose Street with the intention of building 150 units of housing for Simcoe County community housing. The second aspect of that is market affordability. So why are houses twice as expensive as they were three years ago? Why is rent the fourth highest in the country in a city the size of Berry? The reason is we don't have enough supply. We don't have enough supply of purpose-built rentals to meet the number of people who are wanting to come to our community. And we don't have enough new housing that's been built to meet the demand. But but, and I think your question is exactly right. This is happening everywhere. It's a little bit worse in Berry because we have so few rental buildings and apartments. But it's happening across the country. And those are macroeconomic factors related to cheap mortgages being available. People having extra money that they didn't spend on other things over the last two years. So they're now investing. A full 25% of real estate purchases, of home purchases in Berry are investments, not people living in them. They're people buying them either to rent them out or to flip them or to fix them up. And and that's part of the issue. It's, it's a, it's a great thing when people buy something and turn into a rental and those sorts of things. But now and again, we get people that buy them and they take them off the market or they they're vacant for a while. And and then they aren't, aren't available. And there have been a lot of cases of, you know, former rental properties being sold. So the problem, when you aggregate that, you know, those decisions make sense for the owners. Who wouldn't want to cash in if they could? But, you know, the the net effect of that on a, on a community level is that we don't have enough supply to bring down the prices. And the the hopeful answer I would give you is not only did our task force open up the potential to build housing on lands where we couldn't do that Berry previously, so some commercial zones, some institutional zones. We're going to have a dedicated staff member whose sole job is affordable housing. And there's a bunch of other initiatives. But I think the thing that will actually make the difference, there's two things. One is, I think the macro factors will probably come to an end at some point. Either interest rates will go up enough that not as many people will try and buy. Or the property market's going to, you know, have a landing and hopefully it's a soft landing, not a hard one. But I think what will happen in Berry is as our new subdivisions get built in the south end in the secondary plan areas, you're going to have a lot more new homes available to the market. And that eventually will help moderate the the prices. I feel so bad for anybody trying to find housing in Berry right now. I get the stories. We get calls from people who are desperate. They've been, you know, told to leave their their place that they'd been renting for years, or they've, they've been unable to find a place for their child or whatever it is. And it's really a symptom of both an overheated national situation, which is particularly bad in Berry, and some local factors. And those local factors are that we didn't build rental housing in Berry for 40 years. It just, it stopped happening. All, if you think about all the rental buildings in Berry, almost all of them are 40 years old or older. All of the major buildings that are rentals. And that's because the provincial and the federal government stopped making it economic to build new rental buildings in the 80s. And that's why it's been all condos since. So a lot of things need to change. Your question's a great one because we do need the provincial and federal government to weigh in in a number of areas. But there are things we can do locally, and I think that will start to have an effect.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Lehman. Maybe I just add one thing. I just, I think, you know, it's, and I really, the question is, is so well framed because we do need help from the other levels. And Mayor Lehman said that very very well. And even things that, you know, opportunities we thought that would help with affordability. I remember years ago, beyond landstand homelessness and presenting, you know, second suites as the big option. And that was, you know, we can, you know, have these second suites. It becomes an income for the, for the property owner and adds a unit to the stock because they weren't being built through those times that Mayor Lehman said. And those now are not affordable. And we had a similar situation. I know the folks in Allendale, and I know some of you on the call are probably impacted by another effort that was designed to create more affordable units was the accessory, secondary accessory dwellings. So those small units that were meant to be granny flats or granny suites. And those, as we learned over the last year, as we reevaluated and changed our rules around those were also not affordable. 90% of them were not affordable. So really challenging when some of the options that were seen as as key elements to increase affordability no longer became affordable. So you're right, we do need assistance from other levels. And and I'm pleased the mayor has the task force and the work they're putting in to really address this. But what we can do locally with the county and partners, but it'll take all levels, 100%. Thank you.
For sure.
Great, thank you so much. So we have a question from the audience. Having a walkable community also means having a job to walk to. Not everyone can work from home or wants to work from home. What forward thinking is there on the part of council and staff for attracting quality, high-paying jobs to our area?
Great question. Wow, thank you for that. I can start with really good news on this one. So the census data just came out, which says how much our city has grown. The population. And we also have data for jobs in terms of how many jobs are in Berry every year. For the first time, we think in at least 40 years, the number of jobs grew faster than the population of the city over the last five-year period. That's really unprecedented. Now, some of that is because our population growth slowed down for for good reasons that we've just been talking about, the lack of available housing supply. But the job growth was really good. And it's about 14,000 jobs over the last 10 years. And, you know, that, so I think some of what we've been doing has been working. And what we've been trying to do is, is focus on helping Berry firms to expand as much as our work to recruit inward investment, new companies, because as much as there are companies out there that are looking for a new location or might relocate from the GTA, and we do see our share of those, we, we actively recruit those through the city's Economic Development Department. Most of your jobs come from companies that are already here, choosing to grow here. And so we've seen real growth in the manufacturing sector pre, prior to COVID, in the hospitality sector, food and drink and restaurants. And that will come back in the, in creative industries, in web content. There's been a whole series of sectors that we are seeing a lot more growth. And what we're trying to do now, the biggest challenge for most of these companies is to find people. We're entering a period of labor shortages in Canada, and those are particularly acute in certain industries, such as skilled trades, technology in healthcare. And so now, you know, cities used to compete by, by having, you know, low, low taxes, low-cost land, maybe lots of empty land that could easily be built on, all important. But that's not the major competitive advantage anymore. It's your workforce. And that's why Georgian is so important to the city's future. Lakehead being in Simcoe County now, that's really helpful to our future. But we really need to focus on making sure that we have the skilled workers for those industries because increasingly the jobs follow people, not, not the other way around. And I agree with you with the remote work. I think my own view is that's a bit overstated for two reasons. One is a lot of the, the vast majority of the economy still requires people to go to a place of work. It's only a relatively small proportion of the population that even have the option to be able to work from home. But, you know, there are some, and there are more since COVID, for sure. But there, you know, there are some, and there are more since COVID for sure. But I think the other factor is people need human connection, and I don't know of too many companies that are going 100% remote. Some with purely clerical or call centers, those sorts of things. But we're not a bad example. You know, we have some departments that are going to be hybrid after COVID, work from home, but, but still come in. But then, most of what we do, including what, uh, what Constables Langdon and Brooks do and so many other city employees, you can't do from home, uh, and, and that will continue. So anyway, your question as well was about walkable neighborhoods and how we make sure that we're attracting high-paying jobs. A lot of it now is about making sure we have the trained workforce and, and working with Georgian to, to create an environment in which companies can grow and succeed in our city.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So, uh, William Scott, we've got your hand up. I'm going to try to add you to the conversation.
Bill.
In theory, there we go. And we'll just ask you to unmute. And you're good to go.
Yeah.
Oh, my apologies. It sounds like it's chopping out on you. We'll try to get Bill back, um, but in the meantime, what I'll ask is, um, will the most recent change to Barry becoming 24/7 dispatch, including other regions, impact our service to residents?
If that's a question about fire dispatch, which I'm guessing it is because of today's launch, no, in no way. In fact, it'll enhance it. What we did today was we announced, uh, in fact, it's been going on for a week now. Uh, the city of Barry is dispatching for Markham Fire and Emergency Service. But Markham is just the latest customer of our Fire Communications Department. We, we have already dispatched for 21 other municipalities. And we added Markham to become 22. Now certainly they're the largest and, and they're bigger than Barry and most of the other customers we have combined. So we did add a lot of territory. We also added all their people. So the, the Markham dispatchers, uh, have, have come up to Barry and joined the Barry Fire and Emergency Service almost all. And, um, the big advantage, I think, is that the technology that we've invested in, which wasn't too cheap for next generation 911 and some other, uh, systems, now will be spread across a much larger customer base. Markham is paying the city of Barry fee for service. So, uh, it's very exciting and, uh, no, there shouldn't, shouldn't be any negative impact. In fact, there should only be a positive impact in part because we've added some very experienced call takers. But also because in the process of getting ready to, to take on Markham as a customer, we invested in upgrades to a whole series of our systems and their environments.
Great, thanks so much. I'm not too sure if Bill's able to connect with us, but we, we're just keeping him on in case he can. So my apologies for that.
Yeah, am I on yet?
There you go. Perfect.
But my question is to the, to ask about the status of the archaeological investigation at the train station and whether it's steadily increasing scope is going to impact on the scheduling for building the new bus terminal, which is close by it.
So I can answer the second part, and then maybe I'll ask Mike Kraus to answer the first part. So the first part is, will it delay the bus terminal? No, because, um, the bus building, uh, it's not a terminal. It's actually a building, uh, smaller than terminal. So the bus building is on an area of the site that's been cleared archaeologically, and it was cleared some, some years ago, which is what allowed us to progress with applying for infrastructure funding and designing the project. In terms of the status and the completion of the work, it, it's focused right around the historic station building itself. And even though, as you know very well, Bill, as, as they go out, they have to keep going until they don't encounter anything more. Uh, I think we have some confidence around what the edges of that ultimately could be. Mike, are you able to, uh, update the, the sort of status and the timing of the archaeology?
Sure, Mayor Lehman. Thanks for the opportunity and thanks for the question. Uh, I think it's important to note that the, the scope of the archaeology has really been driven by provincial requirements. So really has nothing to do with the, the change of the, the relocation of the bus terminal in the future. It's driven by the provincial requirements around the archaeology itself. Uh, and certainly we have had to increase that scope, uh, based on feedback from the province. But we still remain confident the archaeology will be done, uh, in the very near future, as I knock on wood. Uh, we had hoped to have it wrapped up this calendar, uh, year, that being, uh, 2021, we just closed. Uh, we now expect, uh, probably before the summer, we'll have it wrapped up. Uh, assuming we don't have any surprises, but we are, we are very close to the end.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so we do have a question. Um, it's directed to Barry Police. Could there be a comment on the city's serious problem of human trafficking? Are those panhandling on the street corners part of any kind of human trafficking organization, or is there any concern with regards to that?
Kira, do you want to start on that?
Sure. I don't have all the answers, but I can just comment to you that we have a unit that is dedicated to our human trafficking. We have, um, three officers who are solely assigned to various projects in and around the city and work exclusively with lots of our organizations around where possible human trafficking can, um, occur, whether or not it be at, um, our shelters or youth shelters or anything like that. The city or the service is working collaboratively with our partners to ensure that the victims are feeling safe enough to come forward. So we do have a hub, obviously. We know that. It was out in the media. And we do everything we can to try and bring those victims forward to allow them the opportunity to talk. We also have lots of different services, such as our victim services here in Barry and lots of different hotlines to report. Without the information being given to us, it's hard for us to act upon it. And a lot of victims unfortunately like, don't like to come forward. So it's our unit that's going out actively trying to seek out the victims and try to encourage them to come forward so we can try and assist them and alleviate the, the problem. I hope that you said, oh, about the panhandling too. The panhandling. So our community safety and wellbeing team consists of several different officers. We do go out and do a lot of education. You can well imagine if we go out and we are, um, targeting the panhandlers and we're giving out tickets to those individuals. We're not doing anything for them. We really need to come, become, or sorry, come to the root cause of the problem. And really our biggest thing is trying to get them the resources, housing, shelter, money, bus tickets, all that kind of stuff to actually help solve their problems as opposed to trying to punish them. And a good thing, I had a great conversation with an, a gentleman who was panhandling. He said, you know what, Officer Kira? I appreciate that you come and you yell at me every day to get off the road because you're worried about my safety. But at least I'm not stealing. I'm not stealing from anybody. I'm just collecting a couple of dollars. And I know it's annoying to everyone. It's just, we really are trying to work with the problem and solve their issues rather than, um, trying to get them right off the street.
Thank you so much for those insights.
If I could do that, I, I, yeah. Possible Brooks, I, I, one of the things that, you know, in the question, there was a sense of that, that you could see human trafficking. And I think that the, the difference in my learning in human trafficking is it's not something that you see on street corners like, like general prostitution. This is, and I, and I remember hearing, uh, a story from a, a young woman who had lived through human trafficking. And it's, it's very different than what we would see as traditional, um, prostitution. And if, and I don't know if there's any places you could direct people to get more information about what human trafficking is and how to be aware of, 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 of you know, situations that may be presenting as, because it's, it's very different. That's all I can say.
There is a Canadian National Hotline for human trafficking. And if you need support or you want to report anything, as far as getting information, um, for the general public, they're not, there isn't that I'm aware of a lot of actual general information, but there are a lot of resources for victims out there. And I would strongly encourage you to contact our non-emergency number, which is 705-725-7025, and ask for, uh, to speak with one of our human trafficking officers because they specialize that in that. Also, the women's, women and children's shelter is a great start. And our victim services, another great start, just to get some answers and more information on it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. We have another question from the audience. Uh, with the own new OP in place, what are the next steps to protect our historical heritage buildings? Particularly concerned with what vetting will or is in place prior to demolition permits that are being approved.
Uh, I'm actually going to say, why doesn't Ms. Banfield kick us off on that one too? And then Jim, I can come in.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for that. And so we worked closely with, actually, Councilor Jim Harris and the entire Heritage Barry Committee to the greatest extent possible. And Tom, actually, that's on my team. As it was a big OP team member, but also sits on like the committee. So, um, there's definitely, we talk about the OP as being a foundational document. So there's definitely some things in there that relate to demolition that we don't have in place yet. But, um, are saying that staff are going to look at, um, as just one of the many to-do lists or to-do items coming out of the OP. And at the same token, you know, uh, want to draw attention to the fact that we do have the, um, heritage, um, the neighborhood heritage strategy, as well as we have put in some additional provisions in the new OP to, uh, for the neighborhoods, more so than the buildings, but you know, put some special provisions in for the, uh, the historic neighborhoods as well. So all of those things really, uh, will work together. And we always say from a policy perspective, whatever policy is more restrictive is the one that we apply. So if there happens to be something more restrictive in the heritage strategy, we'll follow that. If there's something more restrictive in the official plan, we'll follow that. And then again, uh, looking at, um, some of the demolition pieces coming out of, uh, as I said, the to-do list of the foundation document of the OP. We understand that it's, that it's really important to people to, um, preserve those heritage buildings and, and even just the addition of a different, um, type of study that looks at, the impact of new buildings on the existing neighborhood. Not necessarily in a way of, you can't always preserve, um, the entire heritage piece, but, uh, just, uh, but new buildings. And I think we've probably all seen in, in many different municipalities where, um, the old and the new can, can blend in, um, well, and that's really what we would, uh, want to achieve.
Yeah, just to augment that answer, um, I think, uh, that the new official plan, uh, does the difficult, uh, task of mixing heritage, uh, districts, uh, which are literally an, an overlay. They're designated right on the maps with the fact that some of those same areas are designated for intensification. And so the challenge is very real. And, and in, in Old Allendale, probably more than many other areas of the city. That being said, you know, we, the, it's not hard if we go back to the historic neighborhood strategy, uh, to look at the streets that we would all like to see redeveloped, maybe not at the scale sometimes proposed, but I'm sure we'd all love to see ESA, um, you know, between, uh, to Burton and the water, see some redevelopment. We all love to see the empty site on Innisville and, and perhaps some of the other areas on Bradford Street, uh, redevelop. That being said, uh, you know, we have these heritage neighborhoods that have tremendous historic character. And there's going to be a bit of a debate over this, uh, if the province moves to, overrule some of the heritage protections that, that cities have put on neighborhoods in the sense that planning policy is traditionally relied on something called neighborhood character, which unfortunately has been abused at times as, you know, sort of as NIMBY. At other times, it's been absolutely essential to preserving the heritage, uh, nature, the character, the, the environment, the architecture, all the things that make older neighborhoods wonderful. And so, uh, watch closely what happens over the, the next three or four months, because there's this real tension right now between the need for more housing and, um, the need for local decision-making and the protection of, of built heritage. And, I mean, I'm, I'm the one, I'm probably a bit biased in this in the sense that I've brought forward a number of those heritage protection measures. And I firmly believe through our work on the housing task force, there are plenty of other opportunities in non-heritage areas to intensify Barry and solve the housing crisis, um, without destroying the character of our, our wonderful older neighborhoods in the city.
Yeah, thank you, Maryman. Maybe I'll, I'll quickly add, and I know we have some, uh, engaged Heritage Barry members on this call. So I, I speaking on their behalf and, one of the things that we're doing at Heritage Barry, and I think we've had an incredible, uh, three years and a really dynamic group of, of, um, dedicated people, talented people. And we're really hoping that the efforts raise the awareness of the importance and value of heritage. So it's something that we're proud of. It's not something that's in the way of the future, in the way of, of new. It's actually
Exactly.
you can be proud of and, and celebrate. So, you know, and I know Ms. Kalbich, you're on the call and, and you are a, a, an incredible champion at Heritage Barry. And people would probably be interested to know that the age range of our Heritage Barry members, we have young people on that committee, which I think is absolutely incredible and important. So, you know, we're trying to find new partnerships. Barry District Realtors Association is a new partner. So again, trying to get P people who are involved in the housing business and the community to support heritage, promote heritage. Ultimately, the better we do with maintaining heritage buildings, the less likely there's any interest in knocking them down. It becomes very challenging to knock down a beautiful building that's been restored and, and is, is a proud, you know, piece of, of, of a, of a, of a street or, or a neighborhood. So, um, and kudos to the many people in Allendale who have done just that. And we have, yeah, through our, um, opportunities through the city to, uh, apply for funding to help, uh, uh, update a heritage building. So these are things that we offer and we'd like to expand, but Heritage Barry is working very hard to make heritage something that is front and center. And, um, and so thank you to those who are on the call who are Heritage Barry members. I know Kathy Kalbich is on the call. I want to thank you because we've, I think we've really moved the bar for our community. So I thank you for that.
Great, thanks so much. We have, um, a pre-submitted question and a question from the audience here specifically about, uh, clearing of sidewalks of snow and ice. Some of the areas have not been done very well in residents' opinions. And specifically in an area around Lakeshore and Minette's Point. The island in the middle of the road is a hazard to people crossing the light. There is a walk button, but it's hard to reach that as the island is very narrow. Some seniors in the area with local seniors buildings are finding it difficult to use their walkers and wheelchairs and find it necessary to go on the road because of the plowing. Is there any talks about other improvements to service or anything that they should know about with regards to this winter and sidewalk clearing?
Yeah, I, I can just say, I, anytime a resident has something like this, I mean, there's a, there's a few options that you can, you know, utilize. And there's the Pink Street app, which may change, a little preview. There's a service Barry. But I'm also welcome to receive your email and photos do a lot of the work. So when I get a photo and I've had photos in the past where you see, you know, lots of ice and I really, you just, whatever happened in that circumstance, the sidewalk wasn't done well. And staff are really wonderfully responsive when they know. And I, I remember, and I sometimes like, I know there was recently, I, and I, when I saw the email, pardon me, the question pre, it made me think of something I thought, so I saw on Facebook and I had gone, because I thought I knew where it was. I took a picture because I wanted to, to, to be like, is that the place this person's talking about? Because they had mobility issues. And it was near, so I often go and take pictures myself and send them to staff. So, you know, if, if you see an area in your community that's not well-maintained, that's not the goal of the city, um, or our contract. We want them to be well-maintained. So please, you're welcome to email me or, or contact Service Barry and CC me. But happy to, um, assist with, and I know the staff were great of getting out and remedying concerns. I had a individual on the driveway and, and a bunch of, you know, snow got knocked, big ice got knocked into his driveway from a, from a vehicle that was doing service and they came, they came and they, and they assisted. So, you know, if we know we can address it and if there's systematic, like things like the, 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 uh, they're not accessible, like the, 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 um, buttons and things, we're happy to, to address those on your behalf. So please let us know.
Thank you so much, Counselor. Uh, we have a raised hand from Michael. I'm going to try and add you to the conversation. Just bear with me while he connects. And Michael, can you unmute yourself? And please feel free to ask a question.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. Thanks. Uh, just a couple of comments, guys, and I'll be quick. First thing I wanted to, uh, to, to you, Mayor Lehman, I wanted to commend, Counselor Harris for his work on, uh, throughout the First thing I wanted to, to you, Mayor Lehman, I wanted to commend councillor Harris for his work on throughout the ward. He's got a lot of pains in the butt like myself, kicking around the ward, who send him a lot of emails and he always responds professionally in a timely manner to the best of his ability. So thank you to councillor Harris. And I want to say that in front of you, Mayor Lehman. Secondly, something I would, so you guys are aware, I work in the larger law organization. Council is going to want to look at food insecurity as a priority to go alongside affordable housing over the next, I want to say, two years, unfortunately. The only thing keeping food prices down has been the competition amongst us. When that, when that competition thins out a bit, the natural food prices are much higher than you see now in stores, even though people think they're out of control now. So I would just make that comment to keep that on the radar. So things like the community fridge like we have in our ward has been excellent. A lot of those services might need a lot more additional support over the next couple of years. And to please keep that in mind when there's, I know there's very exciting projects that come up and opportunities like art centers and things like that, that would be wonderful for our community. But ultimately, if people can afford to live and eat, there is no community in my mind. So, so I would just ask the council prioritize those things always over, over everything else. But other than that, thank you for the work that you both, for all four of you do within our community.
Oh, thanks for that, Michael. I mean, yeah, they, I was shopping yesterday. And I was, I was amazed. I'm a no frills guy and I must admit part of the, part of the broader family, I guess. But it was a chat, it's astonishing and especially the, the stuff that's got to come from, from out of country. And to that, you know, one of the reasons I'm so enthusiastic about the downtown market and the expansion of the Berry Farmers Market is exactly that reason. You know, they've got 30 winter vendors, 60 summer vendors. They want to go to 50 and 100. That just means more local food options, more fresh food available in our community. And, and that, you know, that provides a new source or new sources of fresh food, which is such a, such a critical piece. We've been watching closely right at the start of COVID, there was a huge amount of concern about access to food, both because of disruption to supply lines and, you know, individuals being able to get out and go grocery shopping. Fortunately, that wasn't as bad as we thought it would be, but now it is, which is really weird. I mean, the supply disruptions have happened with Omicron and right at the end of COVID, hopefully the end of COVID. So, but it's, it's a symptom of a larger problem. And thank you for highlighting it. It's both cost and, and supply disruptions. And we want to have other options as a medium sized city. We should be able to do that. And we live in one of the most fertile regions of Ontario as well. So, you know, the focus on local food, I think, is part of the answer to that, too.
Yeah, if there's anything that can be done, sort of direct sales and stuff, that might be our best option from municipal level. It would be great to see another couple of community fridges spring up or some other options other than the, the food bank, although the food bank does a
I think we might have lost you there, Michael.
Yeah, I'd better get off the connections a little bit wonky. Sorry, guys.
Okay. Thanks for your question. That's a really good one.
Just want to say, thank you, Michael, for the, the kind words and for the, the ongoing engagement. And I appreciate you reaching out tonight and your points around food and housing. And I'm trying to remember where I read it, but you know, somebody had done a study on like, what, what is the key to happiness? And then there's, and, and the key, two key to the keys were access to food and housing. So if you had those two things, you weren't worried about those. They were foundations to be happy. So we know we have a challenge with housing and, and you're right on the food one. And it's something we'd be mindful of. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you so much. So we have a question from the audience. Can Mayor Lehman speak to the 55 points the big city mayors and the province have put together to help with affordable housing?
Yeah. So briefly, the 55 recommendations came from a task force appointed by the government, actually not from us as mayors. In fact, we were a little unhappy that there wasn't municipal representation on that task force, but the government wanted the advice of the industry. So they went to primarily developers and the fight and those who fund them, the banks. Though, so those 55 recommendations, the reason where, where they come from is important is the 55 recommendations really were only focused on how do we get more houses built, increase in supply for purchase. So that misses the whole rental half of the market and the social and public housing part, half of the need or more than half the need. It also misses all the demand side. So, you know, in that quarter of the square, that quarter of the problem, they've got some, actually some good recommendations. They've got some others that I would be quite concerned if they overrode municipal authority and implemented. But I think the 55 and then there's a wide range from things that municipalities, Ontario's big city mayors support to a few that are sort of radioactive, you know, putting 11 story buildings as of right on any street that has a bus route. That's one of the things the task force has proposed. And obviously we have all kinds of bus routes where an 11 story building would be fine, like Bayfield Street. And we have a bunch where it would never be fine, like Baldwin Avenue. So I, you know, I think we, you know, it's, it's the key piece is that my advice back to the government, to the minister and publicly as well, has been respect local decision making, give us the targets, expect us to hit them. If there are even going to be consequences for missing targets in terms of the planning authority of the province being used. Okay, I can live with that, but give us the targets and let us decide how to implement them. Because every city is different, you know, what works in Toronto won't work in Thunder Bay and won't work in Tilsenberg. You know, you need different solutions in different communities around the province in terms of addressing the housing, housing supply.
Amazing. We have a raised hand from Kathy Kolbich. If you can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Thank you. And thank you for that 55 points recap. That was one of the ones that I had asked. I have a couple of questions and you could probably do them fairly quickly. One is, are we charging vacant land tax in the municipality?
No, not at the moment.
Are we looking at, are we looking to do that?
Not really. But we did, believe it or not, there used to be a discount.
I know. That's what I'm asking.
So we got rid of the discount a couple of years ago. No, we haven't, we haven't moved as far as a vacant home tax or a vacant land tax. Technically, you can do it on land. It's tough to do it on a house. The province might do that. It's, it's been kicked around. But as I say, they've been focused much more on getting more supply built rather than the sort of negative incentive of raising money from, from vacant land. Although you can argue that that would be a positive incentive for supply.
The next question I have might be Ms. Banfield, related to sunset clauses on large projects that have been approved. So do we have sunset clauses? So once final approval is given to a project from the time that final approval goes forward to shovels in the ground? Do we have in, within the contracts, you know, sunset clauses that say you have to have a shovel in the ground at least one year out from the time it's, the final approval is given?
So things like zoning amendments, when they're approved, for the most part, they're just approved on the site. And there's no expiration. They're just, the zoning has changed and, and what that zoning allows, people would be able to develop kind of until the zoning ever changes. Where dates and expiration dates come in are things like site plan approval and draft plan of subdivision approval. Those things do have time limits in terms of when things should move through the approvals process. Sometimes it happens in that timeframe and sometimes it doesn't. The city is often requested to extend those, those, those dates. And sometimes we do, often we do, to be honest, and especially when people are trying to finalize their proposals. Where it's actually like an actual fail safe date is when you get to the building permit, building permits, you do have to crack ground within a year, I believe is the, the timing from the time a building permit is issued. So, you know, legacy approvals is something that the planning team are actually going to be reporting back to council on likely before the summer recess to kind of look at an approach. And, and I understand people are sometimes saying, well, if there are these approvals that aren't being built, then, you know, and we have the opportunity to to, to not extend them, I guess, if you will. Why don't we do that? Why don't we take a harder, a harder line on that? And, you know, at the end of the day, for some of these projects, we actually do want them to, to go forward. And so not extending them doesn't actually advance what we actually want. And it's to see those projects come to fruition. But what I will say, say to you is that even if there is a historic approval, when they do come in for extensions, if there are new standards or if there are new policies or if there are new provisions, we update those approvals to reflect those. So it's not just if they have an old approval. Doesn't mean that they can develop if, say, conservation authority rules have changed or if our road widenings have changed. You know, we do update the approvals to reflect those kind of changing conditions. But, but the, the short answer is no, there really isn't, with the exception of building permit. While there are timelines, there is still the ability to issue those extensions.
Thank you. And I just have one more sort of a comment and it's heritage related. Is I, I asked a realtor, a Realtor who lives in Allendale to come up with some numbers for me in terms of century homes, so homes sold between 2017 to 2021, I believe, because I was interested. I've been here a long time. And all of a sudden, it seems like the heritage homes are on fire and everybody's buying them. And I was concerned. And so in 2017, the number that came up was there were 15 century homes, so one five century homes sold in 2017. And in 2020 and 2021, that number went up to 54 and 56. And the resale value on heritage homes is obviously doing very well. And, you know, I think that speaks volumes. And one of the things that we're doing from Heritage Berry's perspective is we want to do a presentation to the Berry and District Realtors Association to talk about the importance of heritage homes, listing them, registering them, and the financial incentives that are there for homeowners. The new home buyers especially, so that they are in fact aware. So that's all I wanted to mention there. That's my little, my little sales pitch. And thank you for this evening.
Oh, thanks for that, Kathy, and for, for your ongoing advocacy for the neighborhood and for heritage buildings in our city and all the, and all the other involvement you have with us. We are a bit over time, so I think what we will do now is do our speed round. This is what we try and do near the end to get to unanswered questions. If we aren't able to answer your question, then Lauren can be in touch or you can be in touch with Lauren. But Lauren, I know we've got a few left in the Q and A and I don't know if there's others who want to ask one, but maybe we'll do a quick round here at the end, since we're just a bit past time.
Yep, I've just got a couple more left. So speed round, keep your answers short, sweet, if you can. Just a quick update on the anti racism task force and how the city is going to be using that task force.
Thanks for the question. So the task force, stay tuned for more because they are coming to council on March 21st to give an update. And that'll be obviously live streamed and public as all presentations at council are. They've been working with the, the library, for example, this month on Black History Month programming. We've got a university partner that they've been working with on employment opportunities and the Town and Gown Committee as we've started to welcome more international students to, to our city, even during COVID, we have significant numbers. So there's a lot more coming, you know, and I guess the short answer is stay tuned, March 21st for the presentation at council.
Great. Performing arts task force. Why was the aim for a smaller facility for our growing city?
Yeah, I don't think it was a smaller facility, but go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I, I think, and I know I have a resident who's very excited about this project, so I appreciate the excitement. The facility, you know, could it be bigger? It could be, but there's lots that goes into the decision on the size and, and and there's many factors. And I, you know, we compared and we, we had an incredible task group and, and represented by the Berry Arts Alliance, who, who is a combination of multiple organizations, one of the, the positives of the theater crisis, it brought our theater community and our arts community all together. And they are formidable when they work together. So they were part of this committee and they were invested in looking at all the theaters that have been built in the recent times in Ontario and looking at things like the size, but also what the theater has as far as the key elements, as far as stage and orchestra pit and fly towers, all these things that make a theater a special place to, to view something and experience something. So there was a report to council in 2020 that recommended a 650 seat theater in that range for the refurbished Fisher. So what we've done obviously is, is bumped that number significantly, eight to 900 seat range. But there's a math around what works and what doesn't work for these types of theaters. They're not, they're not concert halls, they're theaters. And how it fits into the broader community of the Molson Centre as a performance place, Rama, different things. So it really is, I know it's not the number that some would like, but it is a number that's greater than what had earlier been presented and is really what the Berry Arts Alliance is supporting as, as a key both user of the site and, you know, expert in, in kind of gauging what, what's going to work for our city. So I'm, I'm happy with eight to nine. It's much better than the 650. We felt that was far too, far too small. And we agree that this is going to be a much better number for the, for the future for the city. So thanks for the question.
Amazing. Thank you. And apologies for misspeaking there. Does Berry have a section 36 that forces large developers to fund a percentage of the house developed sale price to be donated to the city for parks and other infrastructure or lower income housing?
Yeah, I think it's probably a reference to technically it was section 37, but it's gone now anyway. Yes, there used to be in the Planning Act, the ability for us to do that. We did do it with a few developments. The province has gotten rid of that and they want to replace that with something that they call community benefit charge, which would at least in theory, remove some of the uncertainty around a section 37 agreement. It is our full intention, and it was one of the recommendations of the housing task force, that our CBC be put into effect for the purpose of funding affordable housing. And actually, the task force with input from some great local planners suggested that we should look at, at basically housing in lieu cash contributions instead or as well, where if you can't meet the official plan target of 15% affordable, you contribute cash in the same way that if you build a development with 500 units and you can't provide the parkland that, that's required for 500 units, you contribute cash and, and we may well proceed in that direction.
Thanks. We have a speed enforcement question for our speed round. Big Bay Point between Young and Heronia with two schools, the flashing school zone sign right by the ward doesn't work and hasn't for some time. Is there extra enforcement going on? Or could that be fixed?
I'm sure we can fix the sign and I'll throw to Constable Langdon about the enforcement.
We're always enforcing in the area. We're very aware of the schools in the area. We're trying to pay more attention to it, but I was also going to address with the Roads Department about the signs. Sometimes the lights on those signs are hard to repair, especially over the last couple of years with all the COVID related issues that were happening.
Great. Thanks for the information. So our final question in the speed round is, are the city considering any way to deal with the fact that investors are part of the unaffordable housing problem?
Well, they, they are and they aren't in the sense that, and I don't overstate it because investors who buy homes and turn them into rentals are creating badly needed rentals. And investors who upgrade homes that are in terrible condition and make them safe or add a second suite in the home are adding, you know, affordable rentals. So that's a very good thing when an investor does that in terms of their impact in the overall housing situation. The problem becomes when a rental is bought by somebody who then takes it off the market for whatever reason. Or, you know, in the case where there's speculation going on where a home is purchased and never lived in, there's, there's one not too far from my parents' place that is three years old and it's never been lived in. And it does happen. There, that's why the vacant homes tax is something that is floated. Usually by the federal or provincial government, we have, we don't have the bill to do that locally for a vacant home tax based on occupancy. But I think that, you know, from the point of view of where policies and, and I'm guessing who asked this question, and you've had a horrible experience with a backyard ADU. That problem of where we were trying to, you know, encourage affordable housing to be developed. And unfortunately, people sort of exploited the max densities possible and created unaffordable units. You know, in those situations, we, council, of course, is trying to shut, shut down those and focus on, on creating more affordable and focus on creating more affordable units.
Thank you so much. So that's our questions for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all for being here tonight, being part of this conversation. I really appreciate hearing your questions. And councillor Harris, any closing remarks?
Yeah, just maybe to echo the thank you. It's great to hear these questions and to have a chance to respond and interact. And again, if you have questions or concerns, you're always welcome to email me, jim.harris@berry.ca. And if I don't have the answer, I will get it for you. I'm not the right person. I will find the right person for you. So certainly, happy to be your contact with relation to the things you need in your community. So again, thank you for showing up tonight and taking part.
And a special thank you, of course, to Constables Langdon and Brooks for being here tonight and for the work that you do every day to keep our community safe, and to Ms. Banfield and Mr. Pross for being here, and of course, Lauren Wilde, for all you do, Lauren, to put these events together. And a reminder that you can email Lauren if you have further questions or issues that you would like answered afterwards. So thank you, everyone, and we wish everybody a safe, safe evening, and see you soon. Bye-bye.